Last meeting for March ninth, please come to order. We will start with the pledge of allegiance and a moment of silence.
(inaudible) 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 (inaudible)
Thank you very much. Two is public comment. Walter, I know we had some signatories there.
Do we do? Marissa, no, I'm sorry. Dr. Mullin?
Peter Mullin, Old Bridge Road. Good evening.
You're here.
Here to speak about supporting the turf field at the high school. Two things I want to bring up, real short. One, about fifteen years ago, I sat down with Bob McCarthy, who was head of the high school project at the time. I was the chair of Park and Rec. And I said, "You know what would be a great idea to do a turf field at the high school?" And he had big concern that it might be one of those issues that some people would focus on when they voted for or against doing a high school. So he was a little reluctant to go forward with it. But where I stood fifteen years ago is where I stand today. I was in support of those fields then, and I'm still in support of those fields. And let me just tell one small little story, and it's just one of you probably could have a hundred stories like this. My daughter played field hockey at New Milford High School. And when she was applying to colleges, she was looking to play field hockey at college. Needless to say, every single coach that she spoke with, if it wasn't the first question, it might be the second question I was asked. "Do you play on turf or grass?" Because when it comes to field hockey, college coaches want turf. Because they have experienced girls who are playing on grass are behind. Their skill level is not the same. They just start easily a half year behind those who have been on turf. And yeah, my daughter played a couple of years in college. It was fun. She had a good experience. But it was clear. It's just one small little incident showing that the kids coming through here are a little bit behind mostly all the kids that are actually playing in college field hockey. One more point. Thanks, everybody.
Thanks, Dr. Mullin.
Marissa?
There's more seats over here for all you guys by the door. Don't be shy. Over here. I know.
So, hey, guys. I'm Marissa. I'm a senior at New Milford High School. And on our last meeting, I spoke on behalf of the New Milford High School Girls Across Team. Since I am a senior, whether or not we do get a turf field does not affect me, but it does affect my two players. So I'd just like to introduce Nicole Benedict and Nick Sharon.
Hi, I'm Nicole Benedict. I'm a sophomore at New Milford High School. I, um, it's obvious to all of our sports directors that the across teams, the boys and the girls across teams, are the teams that are most affected by not having a turf field. Because our season is the one who's usually, the snow comes over and it's wet. And our actual first game is April eighth, and we're not expected to be able to even be on fields until April ninth, which is a serious problem because we won't even be practicing on our fields before our first game. And I just wanted to put that out.
Hi, I'm Sharon, and I'm a freshman at New Milford High School. And I hope to be playing on turf before I graduate. So approximately five hundred thirty hours of hard work and sweat goes into an active career at a high school sport. And subtracting all of the rain dates and cancellations that we would have, that severely limits our practice time, playing time that we have on our fields. And have you guys ever heard of the saying, "Practice is the thing"? We are restricted at New Milford High School since we don't get to practice because of the cancellations and all of those restrictions, and the other kids at the other schools do. So yeah, I wanted to put that out.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. We got a lot of speakers, I think, so we'll hold the applause in the end. That's it? We'll go ahead with the applause.
This is not about the turf. I want to stand up. I bring, I step back to the public comment from a prior meeting with Bob Hannah of, I believe, American Waste Management. Wanted to thank the Milford Department of Public Works and my exarba for the fantastic job they did keeping the roads clear compared to other towns, you know, for their being able to get out and take care of all the refuse. Compared to other towns, New Milford is far and away better. And we just wanted to pass along to the council how we couldn't stay and do it here ourselves, so how much we appreciated that.
Thank you. Anyone else from the public wishing to speak at this time?
My name is Mary Gold, and I live at forty-five Ridge Road. And I am here to say that I am questioning, should four million dollars of the Milford Waste Management Fund be used to fund an artificial turf field for the Board of Education? We got a great sales pitch. I saw it on TV. I didn't attend personally, and it was a great sales pitch. But like most sales pitches, it concentrated on positive and really kind of flunked over any negative points, you know. There were very few negative points that were brought up. The first one that I would bring up is, we are going to be using a four million dollar asset that will be gone forever once we buy these turf fields. Nobody mentioned the interest that we're also going to be losing. And it's not going to be interest for one year. It's going to be interest for year after year after year. That's a loss to the town of New Milford. I'm also touched, this was brought up at the meeting by one of the Board of Education members, saying that the Board of Education would be in control of the fields, that they would not be town fields, even though officially they are being spoken of as town fields, and they're being paid for by town money. That the Board of Education, several Board of Education members made it clear that if it's on school property, they would be restricted fields. The town will not have unlimited access the way they have access to other, in the same way the libraries, school libraries have limited access. Anybody can go to the public library, but not everybody can go to the school libraries. These fields being paid for by town money would be restricted. I agree, we do need fields for the town, and I think the town should fund town fields, whether it's a turf field or a grass field. It should be a town field so that everyone has access. Limited access is unfair to everybody in town. One of the things that was brought up was that this was not going to cost the taxpayers any money. Well, the initial cost of four million dollars, perhaps won't. But one day, these fields are going to have to be replaced. I believe the period is usually ten years. Region fifteen is now replacing theirs after ten years, and it's costing them a million dollars. Is that going to be more money out of waste management, or is that going to fall on the taxpayers? My guess is, it's going to be the taxpayers. And we won't know until the payments dig up, but by then it's too late. You put the four million dollar field in. Somebody had asked the question, if in the future, when there does need to be replacement, and it's a choice between replacing the fields or hiring a teacher, what's the most important thing, replacing the fields, hiring a new teacher? That's an important thing to consider, I think that's, you know, to the detriment of the field. People are talking about how good the fields are. Well, pros play on both. If the artificial turf fields are so marvelous, how come all the pros don't have turf fields? They don't. Some of them play on grass fields, some of them play on turf fields. That's true. But it's a matter of choice. And they adjust when they go back and forth, because that's what being a pro is, play on either. That's part of the adjustment. Also, who's going to be benefiting from these fields? There were boys' football, boys' lacrosse, boys' soccer, girls' field hockey, girls' lacrosse, and girls' soccer. Those are six teams. If you count JV and varsity, that's probably twelve teams. How many person, people are there actually on the field for those teams? I believe one of the numbers that was mentioned was seven hundred students will be using it. There's fourteen hundred students in the high school. Half of them are athletes that will be using those fields? I dispute that. I'd like to see, well, not personally. I'd like to see somebody review the names of all the people who will actually be using the fields. We know the basketball team won't use it. We know the wrestling team won't use it. We know the tennis team won't use it. The ice hockey team won't use it. Gymnastics team won't use it. And the swimming team won't be using it. And mentioning the swimming team, a few years ago, parents and swimming team tried to get a swimming pool put into the high school, which was supposed to be put in, but for financial reasons it wasn't, just like the artificial turf wasn't put in for financial reasons. They were told no. How come the swimming team doesn't get a pool if it was going to be artificial turf put in? They asked first. It was supposed to be in there. They have no swimming pool. There are fields for the other games. It may not be the fields they want, but there are fields there. The, um, if there's going to be money spent from the Waste Management Fund to the tune of four million dollars, the people of New Milford should have say in how it's spent, and if it is going to be spent. There's no reason this can't go through a referendum. A budget is coming up soon. You can put the question that I gave at the beginning right onto the budget referendum. Should four million dollars of the Milford Waste Management Fund be used to fund an artificial turf field for the Board of Education? If the voters say yes, problem solved. If the voters say no, problem solved. But I'd like to ask, will this be considered seriously? Will it be considered honestly? And will it be considered democratically? We need to have voters speak on this. It's a lot of money to lose for the town. It's a big asset. It's not just a couple thousand dollars or even a couple hundred thousand dollars. It's four million dollars plus all the interest in the years to come. Let's do it fairly and democratically. You want to put this up, put it before the voters, let them have their say.
Thank you, Mary.
Thank you.
Anyone else from the public who wants to make a comment? I see a lot of chatter, so any of you guys talking want to come up and speak? No? Then we will, yes, sir?
Not mayor. All right, Paul Kana. The woman makes some very good points. Mrs. Fulham. Pros play on grass fields. They don't play on the fields that are in New Milford. All right, let's be honest. All right, they play on something that's very well maintained, and they can choose to play on either one. Same as colleges. Almost every college has this. So to say that they play on grass, it's not those fields. And it's not fair for these kids that they have to give up home games because our fields can't be played on. And these are public funds, and this is what they're there for, to use them for what they're there for. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to comment at this time? Then we will close public comment, move on to approval of prior minutes.
So move.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? We don't have any appointments, and I'll reserve my comments for later. We'll go to item six, which is the turf field subcommittee. Mr. Bass?
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to make a motion to move the proposed turf field project going forward, authorizing the mayor to take further action consistent therewith.
Second.
And so now we'll receive discussion. Joe, are you speaking to your second?
There has been a tremendous amount of effort by a lot of our community members, particularly the turf subcommittee. And I just want to list their names again for all the effort over many, many months that we have met to consider this proposal, that being Peter Bass, Angela Chastain, Wendy Follmback, Robert McCarthy, Frank Worgel, Lou Alpage, Ferrari Lou, right there.
It's right in front.
And Doug Skelly. All of these individuals dedicated their own time for many, many months to consider just a mountain of information with regard to artificial turf. We looked at the pros, the cons, the costs. And in my own personal opinion, this is just an incredible opportunity for the town of New Milford. Our high school is a beautiful asset that we have in place for about fourteen years, and these fields can only enhance that asset. And even more so than the individuals that served on this subcommittee are the students at New Milford. Many, many of these students, the athletes who play on our fields have come forward and have spoken tonight and on many other occasions. And a tremendous amount of credit goes out to our student athletes who play on these surfaces, and all of us have had the opportunity to see them. And we're giving them just one more nice opportunity, one more advancement, and one more thing to be proud of at New Milford High School. It's a beautiful school. It's a good school. We have great teachers. We have great students. And there's going to be a lot of pride that goes with all of our athletes playing on these fields when they get installed. And it just fosters that much more spirit in our students to do as well as they do. And we have some just incredible athletes and teams in this town. And I look forward to being there for the very first game, whatever it might be, that's played on this field, hopefully before this year is out. And it's my pleasure to serve on this committee, meet all these folks, and do what I can for the athletes and the community of this town. Thank you.
Thank you, Joe. Pete?
Thank you, Mayor. Councilman, Phelan said pretty much everything. Also like to thank our fellow councilmen for taking on this endeavor and, you know, asking a lot of good questions. And now, as the process goes, going to a halt. I'd also like to mention that not only are the athletes of the school and the community going to use the field, and so is the band, and so is the color guard. So it's a far-reaching community effort, as most of the kids have said, parents, and everybody else. I'm very excited to have an opportunity to vote on something like this. I will be voting in favor and excited to see this come to fruition. Thank you.
Let's not forget our track athletes. Get to the interview here and remember it.
That's all.
Frank?
I just, I won't repeat what Pete and Joe said, but there is another aspect of these fields that I think are important. We don't have them, so you can't even imagine the creativity that they present. Once we have the fields, I know the students and the coaches will find other uses for the fields, tournaments that we can't, we can't do now. Tournaments bring in a lot of people, and they give recognition to the town. We don't have that now, but we will have that. So I think there's a lot of things that these fields will enable the students to do. We can't even think of the ways that these kids are going to use them. So from that aspect, I think it's money well spent.
Mayor, Jane?
I also support the turf fields. I do have some concerns. I'm not so sure that the health studies that were presented are very conclusive. There hasn't been enough time yet, and I do worry that in the future, you know, Triantolo and Triantolo will be advertising, "Ten years down the road, your child played on a turf field." It's something we just don't know yet, because I'm in the health field. I do have concerns about that. But that being said, I do support it. I just have a question about financing it. And is this just for a vote now, and then we're going to discuss financing?
Because we still don't have the exact ballot number yet.
Right.
So this is authorizing the mayor to go forward with the project, to develop the building committee and to be able to bid it out so that we can get an exact number to consider.
Okay.
And then any other questions that you have along the way also?
Okay, because I just had concerns about taking the whole amount out of Waste Management and...
And we can come up with a way with that with the board council and with the finance director that, uh, should, you know.
Okay.
That way we meet the people who are, it's a compromise, so we're not impacting negatively to the people for assistance with taxes, offset taxes, but also still go forward with a project with that money paying for it. Walter?
Not to steal anybody's thunder, but as I read through the Western Connecticut Council of Governments, the municipal leaders' response to the turf fields, I did get a chuckle at the end. Ridgefield, yes. Luton, yes. Newtown, yes. Reading, yes. Brookfield, yes. Greenwich, yes. It got down to Danbury, and I said, "Well, it makes sense to me." They didn't mince any words. All they said was, "We have three of them. They are terrific. Go for it."
Thank you. Katie?
I think that for all the reasons aforementioned, for tourism, for the students mostly, for things, as Frank said, we don't even know how these fields will be used until we have them. I was not necessarily gung ho about this when we started. It is a lot of money, and I think there are some health concerns also, and as Mary Jane pointed out, let's hope that they're not. But I read as much as I possibly could. I talked to people who use them, played on them, and I think that it is only fair for our students in this town to have the opportunity that just about every other town around us and in all their conference play, I think they deserve the opportunity to have a good field to play on. And I am in favor of going forward with the mayor going to the RFP, and I can only say, something I said before, is that I hope the maintenance that is needed to keep this turf, if and when it is put in, up to par, is taken care of properly so we don't end up having to replace a field or have a field we can't use. So you kids should all have those that come behind you, keep reminding your coaches of that. But I'm in favor of it.
Thank you, Mayor. I concur with what all of my colleagues said here at the table. I want to thank the people here who have spent the time to put this plan together and to vet it out. There's a lot of passion about this issue here in town, as we know. The town deserves it. The kids deserve it. Our community deserves it. But let's not, let's not make mistakes. We have to make sure we maintain this, and everybody is vigilant on this. And I mean everybody, from every kid that plays on it, every parent. It's important that this asset gets preserved. Hopefully, this will be the banner of the town once we get it built. This will be the banner of the school when we try to, we're attracting families to come and live in our community. This is something that we need. This is something we deserve. And I think with all the due diligence done by everybody on the committee and the future building committee, it's going to go in right so that it'll last ten to twelve years. And that's very important. Thank you. Thank you to my two colleagues, Mr. Bass, Councilman Bass and Councilman Phelan, all the folks in the Board of Ed, and all the people from the community who worked hard on this. And Councilman Ward, by far.
I know I'm a Democrat. I don't tell...
That's not, not true at all. Not true at all. This is, and we'll back that up just to say, Frank, this is not a political issue. Democrats and Republicans and independents love athletics. They're all way on that. Thank you very much.
Any other comment? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Motion passed. So the next item off will be the senior center.
Go home, do your homework.
Carol, he can't hold the ground. (laughter) Carol, you're not able to hold the ground. Come on. That's how I am with my friends.
You're not his friend?
Your daughter.
Oh, your daughter. Ha, ha, ha.
Keep up the budget pace.
Sue?
I'll talk to him. I'll talk to him. Thanks, though.
I could send the MSW magazines to your group, too. You guys could discuss. Oh, I read online. Oh. Okay. Item seven is the senior center discussion, possible action on the Commission on Aging's request for the adoption of the following resolution pertaining to the DOT Matching Grant Program, Section thirteen D. What time do you have to do the resolution?
Resolution authorizing the mayor, Pat Murphy, to negotiate and execute all necessary agreement contract documents on behalf of the town of New Milford with the Department of Transportation of the State of Connecticut for the elderly and disabled. Demand responsive transportation expanded program into a fixed perpetuity seal. I should have read this before I read it.
Second.
Would have been easier.
All in favor? Aye. Abstained? Item eight, parks and rec.
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to discussion, possible action, request to close the following roads during the forty-eighth annual eight mile and five K road race on Saturday, July twenty-fifth, two thousand and fifteen, with a start time of eight thirty a.m. Read them all?
Uh, yes.
Five thirty, five thirty a.m. to eight thirty-five. Main Street northbound closed. Eight forty to ten thirty, Main Street southbound closed. Elm Street on the top of the green closed as needed to allow runners to cross. Bennett Street closed at the start of the race, allowing runners to clear. Fifteen minutes maximum. Eight thirty to ten thirty, Houston Avenue, Wardman Road at Asper Tucker Ridge Road, one-way traffic northbound.
Second.
And the reason that you see a little change in the route is because of some bridge work being done. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Nine is public works. Pete?
I'd like to make a motion to request two appropriations. Ten thousand from the non-winter overtime account, number six zero eight nine dash one two zero dash zero zero four, and a hundred twenty thousand from surplus or any other account determined by the Director of More Clients, for a total of one hundred thirty thousand to the labor overtime account, number six zero eight nine dash one two zero dash zero 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 one, in order to manage the staffing demands due to severe winter weather conditions.
Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Nine B I put in for you guys to, you guys, can you tell them from the New York State? Sorry. Yeah, you guys. With regard to Kerma, and if you recall, we had added safety charges, I guess you would say, or duties to the assistant engineer. And then we also take seriously our safety committees throughout the town. And you'll see here an explanation of some of the changes and enhancement DPW has taken with regard to their workers and their safety. And they've actually been recognized by Kerma and will be presented with an award. So I wanted to make sure that you all were aware of, you know, how seriously they were focused on the safety of our employees. And of course, that helps with our insurance costs and things like that, plus it keeps our people safe. And I was pretty excited when I got notified. Thanks, Mike.
Thanks, Mike.
Keep up the good work. Home still here? Oh, yeah, it's Mike.
Mike.
Item ten is action on the public hearings that we heard earlier this evening at seven and seven fifteen. Item A.
Oh, so move. Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? B is also...
Sure.
........................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................ ...[606.27] the people who will actually be using the fields. We know the basketball team won't use it, we know the wrestling team won't use it, we know the tennis team won't use it, the ice hockey team won't use it, gymnastics team won't use it, and the swimming team won't be using it. And mentioning the swimming team, a few years ago, parents and swimming team tried to get a swimming pool put into the high school which was supposed to be put in, but for financial reasons it wasn't, just like the artificial turf wasn't put in for financial reasons. They were told no. How come the swimming team doesn't get a pool if it was going to be artificial turf put in? They asked first. It was supposed to be in there, they have no swimming pool. There are fields for the other games, it may not be the fields they want, but there are fields there. If there's going to be money spent from the Waste Management Fund to the tune of four million dollars, the people of New Milford should have say in how it's spent, and if it is going to be spent. There's no reason this can't go through a referendum. A budget is coming up soon, you can put the question that I gave at the beginning right onto the budget referendum. Should four million dollars of New Milford Waste Management Fund be used to fund an artificial turf field for the Board of Education? If the voters say yes, problem solved. If the voters say no, problem solved. But I'd like to ask, will this be considered seriously, will it be considered honestly, and will it be considered democratically? We need to have voters speak on this. It's a lot of money to lose for the town, it's a big asset, it's not just a couple thousand dollars or even a couple hundred thousand dollars. It's four million dollars plus all the interest in the years to come. Let's do it fairly and democratically. You want to put this up, put it before the voters, let them have their say.
Thank you, Mary.
Thank you.
Anyone else from the public who wants to make a comment? I see a lot of chatter, so, any of you guys talking want to come up and speak? No? Then we will, yes, sir?
Not a mayor. All right, Paul Kagan. The woman makes some very good points, Mrs. Bowman. Pros play on grass fields, they don't play on the fields that are in New Milford. All right, let's be honest. All right, they play on something that's very well maintained, and they can choose to play on either one. Same as colleges, almost every college has this. So, to say that they play on grass, it's not those fields. And it's not fair for these kids that they have to give up home games because our fields can't be played on. And these are public funds, and this is what they're there for, to use them for what they're there for. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to comment at this time? Then we will close public comment, move on to approval of prior minutes.
So move.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Okay. We don't have any appointments, and I'll reserve my comments for later. We'll go to item six, which is the turf field subcommittee. Mr. Bass.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to make a motion to move the proposed turf field project going forward, authorizing the mayor to take further action consistent therewith.
Second.
And so now we'll receive discussion. Joe, are you speaking to your question?
Yeah. There has been a tremendous amount of effort by a lot of our community members, particularly the turf subcommittee, and I just want to list their names again for all the effort over many, many months that we have met to consider this proposal, that being Peter Bass, Angela Chastain, Wendy Fallenback, Robert McCarthy, Frank Worgel, Lou Alpage, Ferrari Lou, right there.
Right in front.
And Doug Skelly. All of these individuals dedicated their own time for many, many months to consider just a mountain of information with regard to artificial turf. We looked at the pros, the cons, the costs, and in my own personal opinion, this is just an incredible opportunity for the town of New Milford. Our high school is a beautiful asset that we have in place for about fourteen years, and these fields can only enhance that asset. And even more so than the individuals that served on this subcommittee, our students at New Milford, many, many of these students, the athletes who play on our fields have come forward and have spoken tonight and on many other occasions. And a tremendous amount of credit goes out to our student athletes who play on these surfaces, and all of us have had the opportunity to see them. And we're giving them just one more nice opportunity, one more advancement, and one more thing to be proud of at New Milford High School. It's a beautiful school, it's a good school, we have great teachers, we have great students, and there's going to be a lot of pride that goes with all of our athletes playing on these fields when they get installed, and it just fosters that much more spirit in our students to do as well as they do, and we have some just incredible athletes and teams in this town. And I look forward to being there for the very first game, whatever it might be that's played on these fields, hopefully before this year is out. And it's my pleasure to serve on this committee, meet all these folks, and do what I can for the athletes and the community of this town. Thank you.
Thank you, Joe. Pete.
Thank you, Mayor. Councilman Fela said pretty much everything. Also like to thank our fellow councilmen for taking on this endeavor and, you know, asking a lot of good questions. And now, as the process goes, going to a halt. I'd also like to mention that not only are the athletes of this school and the community going to use the field, and so is the band, and so is the color guard. So it's a far-reaching community effort, as most of the kids have said, parents, and everybody else. I'm very excited to have an opportunity to vote on something like this. I will be voting in favor and excited to see this come to fruition. Thank you.
Let's not forget our track athletes. Get a little interview here, and remember it. That's all.
Frank?
I just, I won't repeat what Pete and Joe said, but there is another aspect of these fields that I think are important. We don't have them, so you can't even imagine the creativity that they present. Once we have the fields, I know the students and the coaches will find other uses for the fields, tournaments that we can't do now. Tournaments bring in a lot of people, and they give recognition to the town. We don't have that now, but we will have that. So I think there's a lot of things that these fields will enable the students to do, we can't even think of the ways that these kids are going to use them. So from that aspect, I think it's money well spent.
Mary Jane?
I also support the turf fields. I do have some concerns. I'm not so sure that the health studies that were presented are very conclusive, there hasn't been enough time yet, and I do worry that in the future, you know, Triantolo and Triantolo will be advertising, tell you, your child played on a turf field. It's something we just don't know yet, because I'm in the health field, I do have concerns about that. But that being said, I do support it. I just have a question about financing it, and is this just for a vote now, and then we're going to discuss financing?
Because we still don't have the exact ballot number yet.
Right.
So this is authorizing the mayor to go forward with the project, to develop the building committee, and to be able to bid it out so that we can get an exact number to consider.
Okay.
And then any other questions that you have along the way also?
Okay, because I just had concerns about taking the whole amount out of Waste Management and...
And we can come up with a way with that with the bond council and with the finance director that shall...
Okay.
That way we meet the people who are, it's a compromise, so we're not impacting negatively the people for assistance with taxes, to offset taxes, but also still go forward with a project with that money paying for. Walter?
Not to steal anybody's thunder, but as I read through the Western Connecticut Council of Governments, the municipal leaders' response to the turf fields, I did get a chuckle at the end. Ridgefield, yes, Luton, yes, Newtown, yes, Redding, yes, Brookfield, yes, Greenwich, yes. It got down to Danbury, and I said, well, it makes sense to me. They didn't mince any words. All they said was, we have three of them. They are terrific. Go for it.
Thank you. Katie?
I think that for all the reasons aforementioned, for tourism, for the students mostly, for things, as Frank said, we don't even know how these fields will be used until we have them. I was not necessarily gung ho about this when we started, it is a lot of money, and I think there are some health concerns also, and as Mary Jane pointed out, let's hope that there are not. But I read as much as I possibly could, I talked to people who use them, played on them, and I think that it is only fair for our students in this town to have the opportunity that just about every other town around us and in all their conference play, I think they deserve the opportunity to have a good field to play on. And I am in favor of going forward with the mayor going to the RFP, and I can only say something I said before, is that I hope the maintenance that is needed to keep this turf and when it is put in up to par is taken care of properly, so we don't end up having to replace a field or have a field we can't use. So you kids should all have those that come behind you, keep reminding your coaches of that, but I'm in favor.
Thank you, Mayor. I concur with what all of my colleagues said here at the table. I want to thank the people here who have spent the time to put this plan together and to vet it out. There's a lot of passion about this issue here in town, as we know. The town deserves it, the kids deserve it, our community deserves it, but let's not make mistakes, we have to make sure we maintain this, and everybody is vigilant on this, and I mean everybody, from every kid that plays on it, every parent. It's important that this asset gets preserved. Hopefully this will be the banner of the town, once we get it built. This will be the banner of the school when we try to, we're attracting families to come and live in our community. This is something that we need, this is something we deserve, and I think with all the due diligence done by everybody on the committee and the future building committee, it's going to go in right so that it'll last ten to twelve years, and that's very important. Thank you. Thank you to my two colleagues, Mr. Bass, Councilman Bass and Councilman Fela, all the folks in the Board of Ed, and all the people from the community who worked hard on this. And Councilman Warby, pardon.
I know I'm a Democrat, I don't tell...
That's not true at all, not true at all. This is, and we'll back that up just to say, Frank, this is not a political issue. Democrats and Republicans and independents love athletics, they're all way on that. Thank you very much.
Any other comment? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Motion passed. So the next item off will be the senior center.
Go home and do your homework.
Carol, he can't hold the ground.
Mama, let me feed these kids. Are you shrinking? You gotta be sick, guys.
Carol, you're not able to hold the ground. Come on, that's how I am with my friends.
Congratulations, friend.
Your daughter!
Oh, your daughter!
Keep up the budget, please.
I'll talk to you later. Thanks, love you.
Actually, let's talk to you.
You probably know more about recycling.
Actually, I wanted to know more about recycling.
Okay.
You know everything there is now about recycling, huh?
No. It's a more vast topic than I really thought it was. I could send the MSW magazines to your group, too, you guys could discuss.
Oh, I read online.
Oh, okay. Item seven is the senior center discussion, possible action on the Commission on Aging's request for the adoption of the following resolution pertaining to the DOT Matching Grant Program, Section thirteen D.
Resolution authorizing the mayor, Pat Murphy, to negotiate and execute all necessary agreement contract documents on behalf of the town of New Milford with the Department of Transportation of the State of Connecticut for the elderly and disabled, demand responsive transportation expanded program into a fixed perpetuity. I should have read this before I read it.
Second.
Would have been easier.
All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Abstained? Item eight, parks and rec.
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion, discussion, possible action, request to close the following roads during the forty-eighth annual eight mile and five K road race on Saturday, July twenty-fifth, two thousand and fifteen, with a start time of eight thirty AM. Read them all?
Yes.
Five thirty, five thirty AM to eight thirty-five, Main Street northbound closed, eight forty to ten thirty, Main Street southbound closed, Elm Street on the top of the Green closed as needed to allow runners to cross, Bennett Street closed at the start of the race, allowing runners to clear, fifteen minutes maximum, eight thirty to ten thirty, Houston Avenue, Boardman Road at Asper Tucker Ridge Road, one-way traffic northbound.
And the reason that you see a little change in the route is because of some bridge work being done. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Nine is Public Works. Pete?
I'd like to make a motion to request two appropriations, ten thousand from the non-winter overtime account number six zero eight nine dash one two zero dash zero zero four, and a hundred and twenty thousand from surplus or any other account determined by the Director of Water Plants, for a total of one hundred and thirty thousand to the labor overtime account number six zero eight nine dash one two zero dash zero 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 one, in order to manage the staffing demands due to severe winter weather conditions.
Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Nine B I put in for you guys to, you guys, can you tell them from the New York State? Sorry.
I got you all.
Yeah, you guys. With regard to Kerma, and if you recall, we had added safety charges, I guess you would say, or duties to the assistant engineer, and then we also take seriously our safety committees throughout the town. And you'll see here an explanation of some of the changes and enhancement DPW has taken with regard to their workers and their safety, and they've actually been recognized by Kerma and will be presented with an award. So I wanted to make sure that you all were aware of, you know, how seriously they were focused on the safety of our employees, and of course that helps with our insurance costs and things like that, plus it keeps our people safe. And I was pretty excited when I got notified. Thanks, Mike.
The next one.
Keep up the good work. Home's still here? Oh, yeah, it's Mike.
Yes.
Item ten is action on the public hearings that we heard earlier this evening at seven and seven fifteen, item A.
So move.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? B is also...
So move.
Second. With regard to the exemption for one hundred percent disabled veterans. Any discussion?
Yes, ma'am. I'd like to thank you for bringing this ordinance forward, and I think it's the least we can do for disabled veterans.
Here it is.
Thank you, Mayor.
Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? And item eleven is accepting a thousand dollar donation from the New Milford Trust for Historic Preservation to be used toward the restoration of Boardman Bridge, and we have a specific account created just for that, so tell everyone they're welcome to donate. We have an account just for the bridge restoration. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Item B is with regard to, now remember, we merged with SWRPA, HEFCO and SWRPA, the regional planning organizations and council governments, and now we're Western Connecticut COG or WECO. And this is with regard to nine hundred and eighty thousand dollars that was left in a fund to do GIS work and flyer. So SWRPA has already had this done in their district, you know, Prime and St. Mary's Dairy and Westport, all that. And this would be so the ten HEFCO towns would have a flyover this spring while the leaves are still off, bringing us with a grid of two feet and a GIS program that we as municipalities and residents would be able to access. So this is for a grant that would be spent on the HEFCO towns for our GIS program, no cost to us, and it will pay for that and the support for the next three years. Walter?
So move.
Second. Frank?
I'm just curious.
Do we have to read it?
I understand what the GIS is. How does that compare to Google Earth?
It's probably...
Two feet.
It's two foot.
I mean, I don't know, Google Earth, you can come up building it down and look in the living room window.
That's only if they're driven by you with the camera.
Right.
The only spot you see from Google Earth, besides with the satellite, when you're on the street, there's somebody drove down the middle of the street with cameras shooting in every different direction, carrying up that object.
So this is going to be more...
Every...
Mike?
Did you entertain me to explain just a...
Would you guys entertain my...
Brief technical...
It seems to be...
You think Google Earth is basically, I'll say, orthographic pictures, okay? You get down to GIS level, you're talking about managing that on a different, on a level of mapping technology that's not just photographic measures of displaying things, but ways of then managing data within those items, so street lines and trees and catch basins and a whole variety of other items that can be tagged in there to help us land farmers in a lot of different ways. You start parceling out, and so our current GIS system on our site has, you know, individual plots identified with property owners. And so all that data is loading into the database system, but with the deflections that they're using this on flyover, you're talking about the property in addition to just the, you know, like I said, just the image mapping of what you're seeing, you're talking about putting all those other data layers that can be managed and used by engineers and planners and different, so, you know, that helps you explain a little bit differently, but that's really what, why you need, you know, the GIS version of it compared to just a Google map where all the Google map is helpful, and you do a lot of things on there. You can't manage the kind of data that towns have, you know, robustly with just that system.
Good, thank you, Mike. Okay?
Do you want me to read it, Madam Red?
I'm ready. Whereas the state of Connecticut through the Office of Parks and Management provides major performance incentive programs, grant funding, and whereas municipal municipalities access the grants through their respective regional planning organizations like the Western Connecticut Council of Governments, WCCOG, and whereas one of the grant eligible activities is the new, I'm sorry, is the joint provision of a service, or services currently provided by municipalities but not currently provided on a regional basis. And whereas the WCCOG would submit a grant proposal for a regional ortho imagery flyer, which would put municipal, multiple municipalities on the same updated cycle for such data collection, thus providing potential for future cost savings. And whereas the Town Council of New Milford wishes to participate in this regional funding initiative for the benefits the project will provide. Now therefore be it resolved that the Town Council of the Town of New Milford hereby endorse the regional performance incentive program, proposal referenced in Section five of Public Act one one dash sixty-one, and act concerning responsible growth as developed by the Western Connecticut Council of Governments for regional GIS service.
Thank you.
Apologize, Walter, for step down here.
Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Thank you very much, Walter.
What are we going to do about the deliberations?
I can, I'll get back to you tomorrow, I'm trying to get the best night for everyone to be available.
Okay. Motion to adjourn?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.